The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on September the 14th, 2021, 10:00 a.m., Commissioners' courtroom of the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag and all leaders. Father, I want to thank you for your love and for your mercy. I want to thank you, Father, for for the privilege of living in a country that we've had the freedoms that we we've had. Father, I pray that you'll continue to be with our country and and keep the freedoms that we've grown accustomed to and we know. Father, I pray that you'll be with the leaders of our country and give them wisdom in the decisions that they make. I pray, Father, that you'll be with us this morning as we make decisions for the county. Ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will go to number three. It's a presentation and discussion. Update for Brazos County Health District on COVID-19 by Santos Navarette.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come brief court on Brazos County COVID-19 situational awareness, an Epi summary report from January the first to September, January the first through September 10th of 2021. That's when our data that we're going to be using is is up to date at that point. I want to thank Dr. Yakapola for putting this presentation together. He's our chief epidemiologist. And if I got any questions or get stumped on anything, I know where where I can go to get the answer.
Great.
We're going to give you a whole bunch of numbers, and this is a global situational awareness as of September the 12th, when we take a look at world cases, U.S. cases, Texas and Brazos County. When we look at Brazos County, we're at a attack rate higher than the state. We're at 12.2. The state's 11%. The attack rate in the U.S. is about four times higher than that of the world, but the fatality rate is about 25% less than around the world. Our case fatality in Brazos County is 1.1, in Texas 1.8, and then we look at the world is 2.1. The bottom one is talking about influenza. We're getting ready to go into influenza season. Influenza is from October through March. And we look at influenza cases normally annually, we get 10 to 36 million cases of influenza annually, with hospitalizations of 140,700, 700,000, with a date ranging from influenza from 12,000 to 56,000. And you look at the case fatality rate for influenza, 0.1. In Brazos County, we're at 1.1 with COVID. That ought to be alarming when we look at influenza having a less death rate than COVID has had on us. A general overview with COVID-19 in Brazos County from our first case on March the 17th of 2020 through September the 10th of 2021. We'd have over 9,000 college students infected with COVID. We've had 33,000-plus contacts from those that were that we were investigating, with those contacts having symptoms that were at 19,000, those contact had symptoms already. We've had 28,000 confirmed cases of COVID in Brazos County, with an attack rate, again, as I said, of 12.2, over 4,600 probable cases. Hospitalizations had been have been 915 with a rate of 3.3%. We've had 850 long-term care facility residents or or staff being affected by COVID. We've had 301 deaths with a case fatality rate, again, of 1.1%. We've had 520 healthcare workers infected by COVID, and 265 food processed and plant employees and staff affected by COVID in our community. There's a lot of information, a lot of numbers on this. We're talking the summary of COVID cases, hospitalizations, deaths since it should be January the first through September the 10th up there. And I want to take a look at, when we look at age ranges, 18 to 24 has been a high rate for us. Those are the college kid age. We've had 5,210 percentage of those cases was 32% with an attack rate of 8.6. When we look down at race and we look at ethnicity, I want you to take a look at Hispanic, with a percentage of 30.6 and an attack rate of 8.1. That that is higher than the percentage of the population in the community of Hispanics. Population is 26%. So the percentage of Hispanics that are getting COVID is higher than the population. Also, when we look at age ranges of cases, they range from 10 years old to 97, hospitalizations from 20 days, 21 days old to 95, and deaths from 21 to 97. We haven't had any deaths lower than 21 years of age. Again, taking a look at the total number of cases when you add the confirmed and the probable was over 18,000 cases up to September the 10th. I wanted you to take a look at, starting in in July, all the way down, this is when this is when the Delta variant became the dominant variant in the U.S., so our cases have started to increase. 728 in July, we're up at August 2106, and we're 10 days, when we last did this case count, we were 10 days into the month of September. We're already 1,332 cases. We look at deaths in up to September the 10th, we've already had 26 deaths. And so that's that's alarming to me. When we look at the mean age of cases, 30, 30.5 years with a range being 10 days to 97 years old with attack rate, again, of 12.2%. Hospitalizations, the mean age is 56, 56, it looks like, with a range of 21 to 95, and again, the hospitalization rate being 3.3%. The deaths, the mean age has been 67, a range 21 to 97 years old with a case fatality rate of 1.1%. Cases by month, as we start in January, we look at the, we start to increase in the less than 18 in June, as we start to see those numbers go up in in June, all the way down through September the 10th. We already have the 10 days since December 10th, we have 444 cases. 33.3% of those cases are under 18 years old. School went back into session. The mitigation factors weren't in place, the mask wearing. We know that kids from five to 11 can't get vaccinated. There's not a vaccine available for that age group. So that that is, that's, the increasing cases in the less than 18 is alarming for us at the health district. And how do we, how do we mitigate that? We are recommending the use of masks, the social distancing, getting vaccinated. Monthly cases by race in this city started in January through September. Again, we take a look at the, it started in March. Take a look at the percentage of cases that were Hispanic, 38.5 in March. Got up to as high as 44.6 in May, starting to trend down a little bit in September, where it's still at 27.1. Again, the proportion of cases which are Hispanic is constantly higher than the percentage of the population. We take a look at deaths by race and ethnicity, and we take a look at the overall fatality rate, again, being 1.1%. In September, again, I'll mention, we're at 26 deaths already. There's a, there's a slight discrepancy between what we report at Brazos County Health District and Department of State Health Services. Normally, those cases that we have to review them, they get reported to the state, and Dr. Yaw has to go into their certificates to kind of ascertain where those numbers can match. So currently, at this point in time, there is 307 deaths that are that are reported by dishes. We're at 301 deaths, so we need to find that discrepancy. Talk about vaccination. Currently, our population is 2379. That's what we base our percentages off. Those that can be vaccinated, 12 and over, our population is 197, 140. And it's get, it gets broken down into, vaccination rate, the far right, is 49.5%. So 49, almost 50% of those 12 and older in Brazos County are vaccinated. The state's run it about 57%. When we look at the age group, there's nothing in the 0 to 11 because they can't be vaccinated yet. The CDC and FDA are working on that vaccination for the 5 to 11 year group. They're looking at potentially the end of October for the Pfizer vaccine to be available for that for that particular age group. We look at the the 12 to 15, they're at 26.5%. But we really, we really applaud the, those that are 65 to 80-plus, they're at over 85% vaccinated, fully vaccinated. That means they've got either the two doses of Pfizer, two doses of Moderna, or the one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. When we look at the the race, we look at white race being at fully vaccinated, vaccination coverage, 46%. Hispanic, 36%. African-American at 33%, and then we look at the Asians at 63.1%. The low coverage should be, down at the bottom, should be 12 to 15-year-olds is a low overall vaccination coverage rate is 12 to 15 years old. Vaccinations by week in Brazos County, we saw the high back in April of 16,000 doses given in a day there and or in a week, and then we're all the way down to 3,200. The Brazos County Health District has a Brazos Valley Mobile Action Team. We were funded by the Department of State Health Services to fund that particular team. We've got six members on that team. Five of those members can can actually shoot in the arms. They're either medical assistants or RNs or LVN. So we've got that team that can go out anywhere in the Brazos Valley. All they have to do is call us up. We'll set up an event. We'll go out to them. We've been doing a lot of events here, not only in Brazos County, but in the Brazos Valley. We were out at Santa Teresa on Saturday. We gave vaccinations for 5:30, 8:30, and we vaccinated 90 people at Santa Teresa on on Saturday. So we'll go anywhere. I mean, if you call us up and if individuals are homebound, can't get out, we'll go out to their homes and give them the vaccination. So the vaccine's available through the Brazos Valley Mobile Action Team. At this point in time, I want to talk a little bit about the the booster, the booster that's coming out and how we're going to manage the booster shot. Pfizer is trying to get approval for the booster for for that particular vaccine. Moderna hasn't come out yet. I know that at the Brazos Center, overwhelming majority of the vaccine was given was was Moderna, was the Moderna doses. So we're going to have to wait. That's coming in October for Moderna. But we're going to, we're going to be prepared at the health district to provide Pfizer booster doses when they become available. Now, we're limited because of space at the Brazos Center. So we've been in conversation with the CEOC, and the CEOC's been talking to emergency managers, and we're looking at setting up drive-through clinics throughout the Brazos County and the Brazos Valley in the future, when these vaccines become available. Now, there's also a a third dose for the immune compromise. It's totally different than the booster dose. So those that are immune compromised, at this point in time, they can get a third dose of whatever, whether it be the Moderna or the Pfizer vaccine.
But
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I want to be clear. We took Moderna here in Brazos County. Does that mean only the Moderna booster is what we should be looking at?
That is what the CDC is recommending at this time, is is to stay with the particular manufacturer dose that you got initially. And if it was Moderna, it'd be Moderna, Pfizer, Pfizer, and J&amp;J, Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine.
Thank you.
Is Johnson &amp; Johnson also working on a booster?
Johnson &amp; Johnson has still not come up to say that they're going to offer a booster. So we're waiting for them. They're not, they're not in the pipeline like Pfizer is and Moderna.
Thank you.
So summary of conclusion on study of vaccine effectiveness. After the Delta variant became the the common variant, fully vaccinated people had a reduced risk of infection, five times lower risk of infection, greater than 10 times lower hospitalization rates, and greater than 10 times the death rate from being fully vaccinated with the two doses, the Moderna or Pfizer, the one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. This data is all the way through July. This is out of the MWMR out of CDC, and it shows the the effectiveness of vaccines and the non-vaccinated in the number of cases and hospitalizations. As you see, as the Delta variant came into play in in June, July, you see those cases rising as well as hospitalizations and deaths. We are getting into the influenza season, and we are providing the flu shot at the at the clinic. So we do have influenza vaccine at the clinic. The the 2021 influenza season ends at the end of September. That's that's that particular timeframe. So we'll begin the new 2122 influenza season in October. As again I mentioned, influenza season runs from October through March. With the low influenza cases that we had last year of 2,638, we at public health attribute that through to the through the non-pharmaceutical interventions there were at the time for COVID, the mask wearing, the social distancing, the hand hygiene. Those were a great, we're not doing that anymore. So we'll see influenza rate cases go up this year as well. So if you haven't gotten your flu shot, it's time to get your flu shot. Some conclusions that we had found as we've done our review is COVID has been to be found to be more infectious, more severe and deadly than influenza. As I showed you, the death rate from influenza is 0.01. The COVID is 1.1%, so hugely more more infectious. The higher incidence of COVID is among the youth is a public challenge for us because they're not vaccinated. They contribute significant source of infection for high-risk individuals and the general population. We found that face masks, social distance, hand hygiene, avoiding crowds has proved to be effective in the prevention of COVID. MPI is non-pharmaceutical intervention, along with testing, contract tracing treatment, and vaccination is quite effective in combating COVID-19. And for us to actually get herd immunity, we need to get 80% vaccination coverage in our population. We're currently under 50% in Brazos County. Health inequities have been amplified by COVID-19, affecting those of people of color, lower socioeconomic status. We are addressing the health inequities at the county. We received a COVID-19 health equity grant from the Department of State Health Services, $400,000 for the next 21 months. We are hiring a health equity coordinator and two community health workers, and we're going to send them out in the community to get the community to let us know what the needs of the community are, and also to address the COVID issues in the community. New public health challenges are the variants, is the Delta variant, and really want to keep that under control, not to to get to a different variant that's going to be more more infectious than the Delta variant, that we're getting reinfections. The big one for us, education is vaccine hesitancy. How do we address the vaccine hesitancy in the community and provide education at the community? What we've done, Dr. Sullivan does press conferences. I've gone on several Hispanic radio shows to talk about vaccinations and COVID-19 in the cases, and we still, with the health equity coordinators that we have, with the Brazos Valley Mobile Action Team, we're educating the community more and more as we get out in the community. What we're doing at the health district, collaboration from the beginning with our stakeholders and local and state authorities. At the beginning of COVID, got support from the county to to hire case investigators. The state came on board and gave us epidemiologists as well to to support our case investigations, contract tracing. We have partnered with Texas A&amp;M. A&amp;M has a center for operations. We've transitioned from contract tracing now to strictly case investigation. The Texas A&amp;M had mandatory testing of all staff, students, and faculty. As of yesterday, they had already tested 70,000 folks. And their particular positivity rate is a little over 4% with with the testing they've done out there. The Texas A&amp;M Contract Contract Tracing Center is, they're investigating those positive cases from their from their location, and they report them to the health district. Then we, in turn, report them to to the state and to the community. Done a lot of information, health education on on a regular basis. Again, with Dr. Dr. Sullivan being the face of COVID here in in Brazos County, Brazos Valley. We've got a new dashboard for the for the health district that makes our information more accurate and visible, usually for any maps and infographics. And that's it for me on a big picture of COVID in in Brazos County from the standpoint of the health district. Does anyone have any questions?
I want to thank you for the presentation. I'm one on the court that has been pushing to have you here, so you can charge me for that. But I think your presentation has been enlightening. There seems, in my view, from your presentation, we still have the need to protect ourselves as best we can. I understand. Thank you. I don't wear my mask all the time, but I try. The washing of hands. But my concern is those that are in elementary school and high school. Are we doing anything with the schools?
We, we used to be on monthly, well, Bob Langton is our guru for the schools. Any communication with the schools on a daily basis. So back and forth with CDC guidance on on isolation and quarantining. So we have daily calls with the schools, and they're reporting their numbers to us, so we know what the the numbers are at the school as well. We have partnered with the schools with providing them some BioNext testing kits that we got through a star request from the CEOC. So we also have the capability at Brazos County. We've got some BioNext testing kits. And as we go on to the community, we'll be able to offer those those testing kits to the community. With Texas A&amp;M and their kiosks that are set up throughout the throughout the community, one at Santa Teresa, one at Cole's Shopping Center now. And the mobile van now is available since they finished the the mass testing at A&amp;M. So we've got the the mobile van that's going to be sent out to Lincoln Center and also to New Zion's Church. And if anyone else, we've got some dates open that if anyone else needs a a mobile testing center, come out there, get in touch with us, and we'll set up a date for them to come out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I I don't see anything in your numbers that include folks who, like me, who have had COVID and recovered, and I have the antibodies. Traditionally, that should be included in that herd immunity that we all talk about. In the past, for no matter whether it was flu or what it was, herd immunity is gained by by the shot and by those who caught it and recovered and have herd immunity. So I don't see any of that in there. And and what what bothers me is that mask, washing your hands, social distancing, those may all be effective in trying to keep us from catching COVID. But once you catch it, they don't do you any good. But your natural immunity and doing things that will keep your immunity up are are vital to that. And I will tell you that for years, I've been taking lots of vitamins and minerals, and I know that if you're not into nutrition, they may not be a big deal. I don't take the flu shot, never have, and I haven't had the flu all these years. I don't know whether that's because I do all the things I do to try to keep my immune system up. I'm going to continue to do them. I'm going to continue to do all the things that are recommended to try to keep me from catching COVID again. I was pretty successful based on my doctor's recommendations. When I caught it, I was able to get over it very quickly with very little, with no long-term, I don't think, you know, impact. And I know that the Regeneron is now, I think, even maybe, there may be even a the governor has put it out that that's maybe a way to to help people who actually catch it. There are ways to try to get, if you catch it quick and you deal with it, there are a lot of doctors who are very successful in treating COVID. I really think that's what we need to be doing, and people should be looking at that, keep their immune system up. And and I'm not against any of it, and if the vaccine looks like it really does probably help keep people from getting a severe case, although I think we did have someone in the last couple of weeks who may have died who is fully vaxxed. So it, so it's not 100% either. Nothing is. But I think, no matter what, whether you've been vaccinated or you haven't, if you keep your immune system, you're going to have a better chance of survival. And I mean, that's that's what I tell people all the time. You ought to You ought to, you ought to be working at keeping your immune system up because if you don't, I, my, my concern from the beginning was that I have asthma, you know, and I could have been one of those that was in the hospital on vent and may have died. But I did everything I could to, that successful doctors were using to try to keep people from getting COVID and to treat them, and it worked for me. So, I'd encourage people, look at what's, what works, do all of those things in addition to the washing your hands and social distancing, because all that'll do is try to keep you from catching it. But if you catch it, you're still gonna, you're still subject to being in the hospital and, and those conditions might not work well. But I appreciate you coming in and, and sharing with us the numbers, and y'all do a great job.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the information, as Judge said. Any, any idea, any theory about why the United States is higher than, than the rest of the world in occurrence of cases? Is that because we're a more mobile society or are we doing something wrong?
I'm going to get Dr. Yow to pull it to come up here. He's our chief epidemiologist, so that case, that, that question's going to go to Yow.
Can I have your question once again, sir?
I was just asking if there's any theory why the United States occurrence is higher than other parts of the world. I believe from one of the first slides, it looked like that our rates are, are higher than other parts of the planet.
Yes, we do not have any theories as to whether an explanation for the rate or the level at which the cases occur in the US. But what we notice is that even though the occurrence of the disease is high in the US, the deaths-
The death rate's lower.
Are low. In other words, it looks like the US is getting right, getting it right in the measures it is taking to mitigate COVID-19, as opposed, as compared to the rest of the world. That's the difference we see.
So, if, if we use our, our measurement as deaths, then we're, we're in good shape. We're doing the right thing.
I think so.
Occurrences, maybe, maybe not, but.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And maybe I want to seize the opportunity here to add something to the concern people have about people who have been fully vaccinated and yet got COVID-19. The facts are that as at September 10, there have been 460 cases of what we call vaccine breakthrough infections. Now, in that same period, there had been more than 18,000 COVID-19 cases. The breakdown is that that is 2.5% of people who had been vaccinated, people who had the disease and got COVID-19. That is, the vaccine breakthrough infections occurred in only 2.5% of people who had been vaccinated. By inference, the rest of the people, 97.5% were not vaccinated. And that goes to show that the vaccinations are pretty effective in preventing deaths of vaccine, vaccine breakthrough infections and in fact deaths. So, there's everything we want to push forward to the public to support the need for the COVID, COVID-19 vaccination. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work that you do. It's much appreciated.
Okay, so we will move on and consider take action on Agenda Apps 4 through 26. Number four is proclamation in, in honor of Hazel Reuters Von Roeder 100th Birthday Celebration. Oh, I forgot to get those signed. Have I got y'all's sign?
You can read this one.
I don't know whether, let me read the proclamation. I'll tell you, after I, I heard some of your life story, this is one that I've been excited to be able to come in and, and. Can you hear me? Yeah, can, do you hear me? This is one that I've been excited to get to come in and read. I'll tell you, after I've heard your life story and your service to the country and your patriotism and, and all that I heard about, I thought, we, we do need to do a proclamation. I mean, 100 years is a milestone, no question there, but you've done, your life is an exemplary of, of the way that we all should try to live. So, I'm going to first read the proclamation. Whereas Hazel Reuters Von Roeder was born in Brazos County, Texas, September the 14th, 1921, and whereas Ms. Von Roeder proudly served in the United States of America during the World War II as an Army nurse trending to many, tending to many soldiers in need. And whereas during the polio epidemic, she lost her husband and made the courageous decision to continue serving our country by re-enlisting as a nurse in the Air Force. And whereas through her time in the Air Force, Ms. Von Roeder remarried and became pregnant with her first of three daughters, she was required to leave the service during, due to the starting of a family, and was discharged at the rank of a captain. Whereas throughout her illustrious 50-year nursing career, Ms. Von Roeder, Roeder cared for her fellow man in hospitals, physician's offices, public health, nursing homes, and nursing home surveyor where she retired from the State of Texas Department of Human Services. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Commissioners Court of Brazos County sincerely thanks Ms. Von, Ms. Von Roeder for her selfless service to our country, state, and community, and we want to wish you a very happy 100th birthday, and I think today is your birthday. Is that correct? And, and I'll tell you, one of the things that your daughter then told me about was that you kind of keep your son-in-law in control with your wisdom and your wit. It's like, a lot of us around here know Elmer, he was, he's retired police chief at the University.
I know good son-in-law.
We appreciate your, your service to the country and for your life, and, and I wish you could have more of a face-to-face party.
Part of my life, I would not change.
Judge, can we sing "Happy Birthday"?
We should, you know, that's a good idea.
100 years, yes, so celebrate.
Start us.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Ms. Von Roeder. Happy birthday to you. And many more.
Very good.
If I'm doing that well on my 100th birthday, how wonderful is that?
We got the official to be signing it, and we'll be, we'll be signing it.
I think she's shorter, we go up to her.
Here is, here's your proclamation.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And thank you for your service.
I didn't want to join as we're having a celebration.
You got it right.
Saturday, 1 o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will go to number five. It's Resolution 21-1015, approving the budget of Brazos County Emergency Communications District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Did we do a vote on? Okay, so we need to go back and vote on-
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation.
And a second?
Motion made, seconded, to approve proclamation, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. And now we voted on number five, correct? Okay, so we will-
Number six.
We'll move to number six.
I'd like to offer a motion to approve A through G.
Second.
Motion made to approve the following job descriptions, A through G, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is request from the Expo for payment authorization to Avanex in the amount of $250 for repair of the sound system due to the storm. An emergency tech call was placed at 5:00 PM to fix the sound system in the event that evening, for an event.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eight is request from Roden Bridge for payment authorization to a statewide material transport limited in the amount of $600.61 purchased order was obtained in advance but was closed before the final invoice was received.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of, of the TCD RS Plan Agreement for 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 10 is Award of RFP 21-065 Electronic Communication Services Recommended Award of Smarh Communications.
Move approval.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Judge, is this at the jail?
I believe that is correct, but I'm not sure. Charles, you want to come? Any other question? Okay. All right, thanks, Charles. Did we take a vote on that?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 11 is, is the approval of the Data Sharing and Use Agreement between Brazos County and Baylor University.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval of contract with renewed strength for juvenile residential services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval of medical and dental premiums, effective dates FY 2020, for effective dates of FY 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval of tabulation for the award of RFP 21-138, grant application as administrative services for trailer and associates.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Charles, you want to speak to that? I mean, that's the-
Yes, so this is just the, this is just the final step for the contract that y'all awarded last week. It was a clerical error, we omitted the tabulation sheet that shows you how we got to, how the committee got to that award.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Charles. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of amendment number one to contract 21-118, janitorial trash liners with competitive choice for price increase due to the manufacturer not being able to supply the contracted price due to global shortage in materials.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 16 is approval agreement 21-143 for text message archiving services with Smarh.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 17 is approval of service contract CIP 21-601, fire panel upgrade for Brazos County Detention Center and Tax Office with Simon's Industry in the amount of $166,684.85. Pricing is under Exmus contract, Exmus 17-8401.
Move approval.
Second.
All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 18 is award of IQ 22-007 Fire Extinguisher Sprinkler Systems Inspections Maintenance Testing and Recommended Award is Brigade Fire Solutions LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 19 is consider and take action on the Brazos Wi-Fi Utility Permit to conduct 10 road bores and install 8,765 feet of cable along the, along the rightway of Enchanted Oaks Drive for internet services sites located precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 20 is consider to take action on Brazos Wi-Fi Utility Permit to conduct three road bores and install 1,460 feet of cable along the rightway of Afton Oaks Drive in, for internet services sites located precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 21 is consider and take action on Brazos Wi-Fi Utility Permit to conduct three road bores and install 1,520 feet of cable along the rightway of Whispering Oaks Drive for internet services sites located precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 22 is tax refund application for the following-
I move approval, A through D.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve A through D, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 23 is Commissioners Court Minutes for the following dates.
Move approval, A through L.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve A through L, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 24 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 20/21, 48.1 through 48.3.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 25, personnel change of status.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve A and B, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 26, payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8109909 through claim number 8110057, and claim number 9002942 through claim number 9003006.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 20, 21, was that 27? Acknowledgement of County Community Supervision Corrections Proposed Budgets for FY 2022, 23. And then 28 is Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Detention population is 39 with 31 males and eight females. Medical isolation is currently at two per protocol, and monitor availability is three.
Okay, thank you. Number 29, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, population this morning is 572, 498 men, 74 women. We have 29 on monitor and four pending. We have 29 positive COVID cases. We have 150 quarantined. We have 11 employees that are isolated and five quarantined.
Did you say 150 quarantined?
I did.
Wow. I'm not sure, I mean, you got a left out that are not quarantined?
About 450. About 450. Uh, that, that, that number reflects an effort to continue to get ahead of it. Uh, that's just two dormitories and those are very large dorms. So-
Well, and that's, I guess that's the good thing about having some room over there is, I mean, we didn't build it for that sort of thing. But, uh, it is, uh, yeah, I guess it's beneficial to have some room to give.
Yeah, it has been.
Segregate folks.
Yes, sir. It has been. Uh, we have, uh, plenty of isolation space and the ability to spread people out a little bit. So that's a, a blessing to have a low population right now.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Uh, number 30 is Announcement of Interest Items and Possible Future Agenda Topics.
Yeah. I, I would like to ask Fred Prain to give us a workshop on guidelines and regulations from Roden Bridge, maybe in November.
Yes, ma'am. I think we can do that. I'd like to, um, uh, go through them and then collaborate with the Roden Bridge folks, the department, and get their input as well. And I think we can-
Thank you.
-get that workshop scheduled for November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Charles.
Judge, if I may, um, Commissioners Court, regarding the grant applications, um, and administrative services, um, we would like to potentially bring the contracted vendor in, in the next few weeks or so to kind of give maybe some highlights on allowable expenses, projects, things like that. Um-
Would that be a workshop for the court also?
I, I think we would do it potentially maybe at Commissioners Court session to allow them just to do a very brief presentation. And I think after that, then, um, um, we would try to coordinate and see how we handle each of your particular points of interest. Maybe hearing some information from the, from the contractor, uh, from the vendor would, um, help get the creative juices flowing so that we can see, know the parameters, if you will, of what's in allowable expense-
Thank you.
-under that grant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll have more information coming soon.
Thank you, Charles.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
Any other announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics? Hearing done. 31 is Call for Citizens' Input and Our Concerns. Possible button. Yeah, come on up.
Name is Isaac Butler. I stand 1449 Cedar Crest Lane, Brian. Uh, just want to make a comment on the, the Health District coming in. Uh, to put the numbers, I think, where everybody needs to see. And this is just my opinion. When we have leaders in the community and we got the Health District, I mean, the Senator, uh, Brian, the Senator at College Station, uh, A&amp;M, I think this would be better suited when the Health District put on this thing, everybody joined together, standing behind them. And I think that'd be a way that probably 90% of the citizens will take it and get the shot, uh, to control this virus spread. I think sometimes people don't understand the situation we in because we have more cases now than they did when they were doing all the protection for people. And me would just sit here seeing it. I, I don't understand it. Until you get somebody in your family to pass from it, you have friends to pass from it. But if we don't get together and join at one community, I may have a different opinion than anything. But when the Health Department come out and we, we don't have the, the education of a doctor, then sometimes we shouldn't even say anything if we came back then. Uh, because then we put out too many different myths. Uh, if they good in that field, we ought to fall behind them. And if we have a different opinion and just say we add this to what the doctors say, then I think this whole thing here will, we could smash it at, at one time. But until all the elected officials that have the power join together and stand in one group behind the, the doctors when they say something, I think most people would get the shot. But until then, we're going to go through the same thing. It's just a rotation. And I think, uh, that what we need to, uh, do as the representative of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac, for your opinion.
And that's the Constable of Precinct 4. Thank you, sir.
Any other citizen input and our concerns? Hearing none. Next item is to adjourn. Thank y'all.